We are unmuted. Can you hear us?
All right, try to behave.
I mean.
Have it a rough night.
It's not a phone call.
I don't know what it is.
It's lingering. Last week was a phone call.
Been a while since I pulled in the driveway.
I think he added some grassables to his treehouse.
I could still be working off that rush from last week.
Jeez.
Did you ever get to sleep?
No.
I've been there through all week.
It got me for a couple of days. I will never do a 32-ounce rush again.
At 8:00 P.M.
Yeah, at 8:00 P.M.
Jeez, no, I didn't.
I was having a hard time staying awake.
I think my niece lives on those things.
Well, I just have a cup of coffee.
You look too breathless.
I like dark, haven't eaten.
I could generally have a cup of coffee at 8:30.
Really?
And I'm a fast sleeper, so.
I got time, Jack. I'll go over by you one of those raspberry rushes if you want to.
I've never had a five-hour energy or anything like that. They all, I think that's way over the top.
I took a five-hour energy one time and it totally, like, I was supposed to be doing a time study for, like, third shift when I was an intern, and I took it before the third shift started, and then I was like, was flying home that day, and then I was gonna sleep like the whole day, and I couldn't sleep at all. And then I went home, and my husband's been home forever, like, because of my family, and it was like a zombie. So I was never.
Well, you gotta know you have limitations, just like donations.
I found mine. I'll go to a Roman joke at 8:00 P.M.
And come back to a meeting.
Roman jokes, yes. I worked with someone over the next, and he offered by me a cup of coffee. He says, well, you don't usually have, you know, I guess coffee. He liked it. Oh, it was a small, regular coffee, and some, it was pretty black, because it was coming with it. And that was nice one. So probably more of that same thing in there. Okay, it is now 6:29.
Tomorrow is?
Yeah.
Oh.
And Roman Jones is offering a free coffee sometime.
Everybody will be jittery tomorrow.
Okay, let's break this. It's 6:29 on the box here. 6:30. Okay, so.
Yeah, I did.
We'll convene our meeting tonight, September 28, 2021. We have four councils present, Jennifer and Tyan. Don't speak.
No, it was an accident from Annie.
Okay. So please rise as you are able, and we'll please leave as we fly.
We're to the States, to the United States of America, the Republic of British States, one nation.
Jojo, come here. Come here.
Our agenda tonight is a public hearing.
Hey, Pat Robinson, can you mute? I could text her. We don't have a way to moderate the main participants, so you could just keep an eye and try to keep yourself unmuted if you're not speaking.
So the first item on our agenda tonight is a 6:30 P.M. public hearing on solar energy facility moratorium. I will introduce this to the last meeting, and we have some amended texts, I believe, just correct?
Yes, that's correct.
There was a question of the facility's permit holder who was concerned about going back in time. What's the big word for that? That, in other words, his permit wouldn't be, he wouldn't be able to get an audience permit for his facility or get the building, building inspector approval. That's a short way of saying that. So we should take a look at that and amend it, the order, so it's clear what is, what is the moratorium. I'll read it. Town Suburban Ordinance establishes an emergency moratorium on commercial solar energy facilities, whereas the state, the main state legislature found that it is in the public interest to develop renewable energy sources and encourage solar energy related to development pursuant to the Maine Solar Energy Act, 35-a, MRS, Chapter 34b, and expressed interest in and have been increasingly developing commercial solar energy facilities throughout the state of Maine. And whereas no specific regulation governing commercial solar energy facilities exists under the Town of South Burwick's only ordinances, and whereas the town's existing ordinances do not provide adequate mechanism to regulate and control commercial solar energy facilities and are inadequate to, or inadequate to prevent potential for serious public conflict, the future established for the commercial solar energy facilities, and whereas town needs a reasonable amount of time to study the land use implications of commercial solar energy facilities and to develop reasonable regulations governing the location and operation. This moratorium, the town will work on developing appropriate land use regulations.
Biden publicly acknowledging they did not support pulling all U.S. troops out of Afghanistan and implying they conveyed their concerns to the commander in chief.
My assessment was, back in the fall of '20, and remained consistent throughout, that we should keep a steady state at 2,500, and it could bounce up to 3,500.
Able to mute their, could I mute their.
Yeah, there's alternate.
What my conversations are with the sitting president in the Oval Office, but I can tell you what my personal opinion was, and I kept always candid.
That contradicts what President Biden told.
There's someone on the meeting named Kenny. No, they're still.
Oh, that's Jessica Seer.
4,500 troops has been a stable situation for the last.
I don't know if it's Jeff or if it's Kenny, but I'll text Jeff.
It's Kenny, it's not Jeff.
Nancy going even further, saying he had given warning about what would happen if we didn't leave 2,500 troops behind.
It wasn't appropriate number to remain, and then if we went below that number, in fact, we would probably witness a collapse of the Afghan government and the Afghan military.
I know Barbara was able to mute people. Do we now have that ability this time? We got it, we got it. John's getting in.
President Biden received specific information, I believe it would be, reason for committing this one.
But the Fed, the intelligence community also feeling the heat today, all the leaders, by they surprised by the swift surrender of the Afghan.
I've studied the land use implications of commercial solar energy facilities and to develop reasonable regulations governing the allocation and operation. And whereas during the period of this moratorium, the town will work on developing appropriate land use regulations concerning commercial solar energy facilities. And whereas the town council finds and concludes that these circumstances constitute an emergency within the meaning of Article II, Section 11 of Town, South Borough Town Charter, and therefore pursuant to authority granted to it by 30-a, MRS, Section 4356, made hereby adained by the town council of the Town of South Burwick. And Town Council assembled as follows. One, definitions. As used in this ordinance, the following terms have the following meanings. Commercial solar energy facility means commercial solar energy farm or development with complete design or assembly for commercial purposes consisting of energy collection and energy storage facility where used and components for distribution of transformed energy. A commercial solar energy system consists of one, freestanding ground-mounted or building-mounted solar arrays of modules or solar-related equipment. Two, applicability and purpose. This moratorium shall apply to any proposed commercial solar energy facility which, for which an application for building permits, certificate of occupancy, site plan, condition, or other required approval is submitted to the town. On or after the effective date of this ordinance, prohibition, that is number three, prohibition. During this time, during the time this ordinance is in effect, no office, no official officer, board, body, agency, agent, or employee of the Town of South Burwick shall accept, possess, or act upon any application for any approval, including but not limited to a building permit, certificate of occupancy, site plan review, conditional use, or any other approval relating to the establishment or operation of a commercial solar energy facility received on or after the effective date of this ordinance. No person shall establish or operate a commercial solar energy, commercial energy solar facility within the Town of South Burwick that is on, that is proposed, on or after the effective date of this ordinance, and shall expand the operations of any commercial solar energy facility that was established or operated prior to the effective date of this ordinance. Four, enforcement violation penalties. This ordinance shall be enforced by the code enforcement officer of the Town of South Burwick. Any person who violates Section 3 of this ordinance shall be subject to penalties or other remedies as provided by 30-a, MRSA, Section 4452. Five, effective date. This ordinance takes immediately upon adoption and shall expire on the 180th thereafter unless earlier extended, repealed, modified by the South Borough Town Council. Six, severability. Should any section or provision of this ordinance be declared by any court to be invalid, such decision shall not invalidate any other section or provision. That's, that's where we're about tonight, folks, and we're interested in hearing any comments from the public. And we'll conduct it the same way we do with our other public hearings. Please identify yourself with your name and your address and indicate whether you're for or against the proposed moratorium, and then you can speak for three minutes to give your opinion or not. We encourage you to stay within those guidelines. We have to assure you that every person will be heard. And if we need a second round, we'll go to the second round. If we need a third round, we'll do that. So, but any person who has spoken won't be called upon again until everybody's had a chance to speak at least once, and follow the same format for round two if necessary. Any other particular thoughts about? Okay. Okay. Anybody wish to speak on this for the purposes of public hearing? Andrew. You're muted.
Yeah, there we go. Hi, I'm Andrew Storitz. I live at 15 Old South Road, and I am for the moratorium. There's been a project that's been going through the planning board that's, they've approved a 30-acre solar farm that completely surrounds my property, so this is a pretty pertinent topic to me at the moment. And I just think that considering proximity to people's homes and putting these solar farms in the middle of residential neighborhoods, I think that should all be stuff that's considered, along with all the technical stuff that I'm probably not hip to, honestly. But as far as living in this town and worrying about small bits of land getting eaten up by these solar companies coming in from out of state and just buying cheap land in towns with no rules at all, I think it's, it's something that could just really turn the town into what looks like a spaceship, and it bums me out. And I'm bummed out about my house and my land, and the thought of my property value decreasing, no matter how much the solar company says that it won't. I mean, if there's two identical houses and one has a 30-acre solar farm surrounding it, I think most people would choose to not buy that house. So thinking about the biggest investment that I've made in my life and the fact that I moved up to South Burwick to live in nature and kind of out in the woods a little bit, and now there's going to be solar panels visible out of 80% of the windows in my home, it's a bummer. So I definitely support putting more thought into how all this stuff gets approached and improved in the town, and that's really it. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ben.
Yes, hi. Pat Robinson, Brattle Street. I also support the moratorium. We've had an awful lot of development in this town lately, and it, we just need a really, really good ordinance about solar farms. I mean, I think they're very important coming, coming, going forward, dealing with climate change, but as Andrew just said, you know, people don't want it in their own backyard, and so it's got to be, it's got to be done right. So we really need to think hard about this. So thank you for doing this moratorium.
Anybody else? Jessica.
Hey there, thank you. Jessica Seer, 37 Academy Street. I am support, in support of the moratorium. I think there's a really great ways to do solar farms. You look at the projects up in Sanford at the airport where it's disturbed land, and then you look at projects that are proposed in town that may really impact residents' livelihoods. I think that's putting together a, an ordinance that really takes into consideration a lot of different fronts is really beneficial. So thank you.
Any other folks that want to speak to the proposed moratorium? Now? Now you're muted.
Okay. Hello, can you hear me now?
Gotcha.
Okay. Thanks for this opportunity. I'm quite concerned about the little bit of information that we have about the development of a solar farm on Powder House Hill. And, and I talk, I'm not speaking about the part of the ski property that belongs to the, to the town, but I'm talking about the part of Powder House Hill that's being used by, I'm going to say, hundreds of young folks with the trails that's going across there, both biking, hiking, walking. I'm seeing, other than young folks, I'm seeing some people a little bit younger than our committee. But I think that this has got to be outside of the R1 zoning area because we don't have this land to keep for recreation for people anymore. I'm also concerned about any silt that might go down to our wells. We have the wells, the shallow wells at the bottom of Powder House Hill, and the proposal was for 26 acres of solar panels there. I am in favor of this moratorium. If you need any more support, thank you for listening.
Can you let the record show that was Melton Kenny of Aggroneticus Road? Is it Alaria?
Hi, thank you. Alaria Zenzar, Back Acres Lane. I absolutely support this moratorium. I think residential zones need to be protect, protected from industry that really should not ever be in a residential zone, and it pains me to hear that people's properties are being impacted. I feel kind of similar regarding solar panels as I do to marijuana. I don't actually have a problem with solar panels. I just think that they, it needs to be really well thought out about where we put solar panels. Same thing with marijuana. Don't have a problem with it, but it really needs to be well thought out about where we want it located, and is it impacting residents? So I absolutely support this. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I think we're all set. If there's no other speakers, close public hearing. Record show closing public hearing at 6:46. And thank you to everybody who showed up. Okay, next up is the Board of Assessors, and the first item on our agenda is the assessing agent authority.
Chair, I move that we renew the agreement to delegate the authority of, to the assessing agent up to and including values of $250,000 to our new assessing agent, Ferna Sharp.
It was motion of a second. Any? Any? We. And we just have a question on when this will expire, will it expire at the end of the fiscal year? So, I guess we don't need to take action, this, this delegation for you shall remain in effect beyond the present fiscal year, I guess, unless we send it, so I guess it's just continuing. So we discussed earlier that it's renewed annually, but.
I think I would, I would guess because now we have a new assessing agent, we need to kind of vote on this again and then it will be, remain in effect beyond the present fiscal year until we choose otherwise.
Okay, so, so it won't require an annual, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, no, definitely.
Any other discussion, Abby, you have anything?
I don't. I have, I'm glad that Jen hired someone so quickly, that's awesome.
Okay, so we'll go to the motion, all those in favor of. Delegate. The delegation of authority to the assessing agent. Say aye, aye, aye. Now, I hear you.
Yeah. Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you for.
Yeah, thank you.
Taking the job. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming in, nice to meet you.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, so we have some other business. The next item is a lot merger, did you want to present on this?
Well, it's up to you, if you, now that I have the authority, I think it's up to you whether you want to look into these items or not.
I think a general overview would be fine, not to go through every, didn't add on it, just. It appears as though there was a. Decision made by the planning board.
This, yes. So, for the J C Hayes properties, with storage units that were put in, there was a contingent approval on merging the lots. And Sir Hayes had come to the office to say, you know, why haven't the lots been merged yet? Well, the process hadn't been followed through all the way, so. There is a, according to the ordinance, there is a lot merger application that needs to be approved. By not only the assessor, but the mortgagee, and we have that page two. So, this now has page two, which is included in your packet. And so I was recommending approval to be consistent with the planning boards. And it would each be recorded so that, you know, it becomes, goes into effect, so legally I can combine those.
Do we, does the applicant record or do you record?
The applicant records.
So we'll get a copy of that?
Yep, I'll get a copy of that and I'll, I'll put it through the motions for the camera system. Commercial lots, and that would be effective April first, two thousand and twenty-two, for the fiscal year twenty-three.
And so this would other, had we not. If we already had our previous motion in place, this wouldn't have meant something, would it, for me?
Wouldn't have any surprise. I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm pretty clear on, on what, I would agree, yeah.
Yes. I think crack at the, the text of the motion should read that. What, South Berwick Board of Assessors.
One thirty-two and one thirty-two.
The South Berwick Board of Assessors. Have consideration of the information presented. Approves to the law line. Of lot merge. Second. We need to discuss on that motion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to, to merge the lots, say aye, aye, aye. Okay, so that motion passes four zero. Then there's a payment number. Two zero two two dash oh two. Marguerite and Donald Keifer.
This is a parcel that needed renewal for tree growth compliance. For this past tax year and it was. I can't speak to the prior assessors, you know, what he thought or what he did, I can only interpret what I saw. And it appears that it was taking out of tree growth, so the value went up. Being taken out of tree growth, but they did put in their compliance application and so. They were compliant, so that was an error, so this is correcting that error, putting them back into tree growth and lower assessment and not giving them an abatement for the difference.
So. How much?
Two hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents is the tax abatement.
The motion's in order.
Mr. Chair motion to grant the abatement for. Lot zero, zero, two dash zero, three, eight, Yorkford Road, and the amount of two hundred and forty dollars and sixty-four cents.
Second. In discussion of the motion. During that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As well, that motion passes four zero, that concludes the Board of Assessors. Meeting for the senior. Thank you very much, Lauren.
Thank you very much. Take care.
Be the town council meeting that ended the term. The town council. And roll calls. Jack, Mallory, John, and Adam. We will the following minutes, public hearing of September fourteen, two thousand and twenty-one.
Chair, I move we approve the public hearing minutes of nine fourteen twenty-one, it's written.
Second.
In discussion of the minutes. Hearing them, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes four zero, no extension. Board of Assessors from September fourteen, two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. Chair, I move we accept the Board of Assessors meeting minutes from nine fourteen twenty-one, it's written.
Any discussion on that? Hearing them, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's four zero.
Town Council of September fourteen, two thousand and twenty-one, to Chair, I move we accept the Town Council meeting minutes from nine fourteen twenty-one, it's written.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion?
Jack, did you, was there a correction to be made in these, I scanned it a good three, four times and I could not find anything. That was a, a he rather than a the. Was this the area that you, you?
That was in the, the resolution about the Free Baptist Church findings. It's another item on the agenda.
Okay.
In the meeting. And number two of approval of the minutes that I was not.
Show amended. May the second?
Yeah.
You want another council meeting?
No, the Board of Assessors.
No, we already did the Board of Assessors.
We're now into the council meeting. Yeah.
You were there, you have to be there. Yeah, never mind.
And then she wasn't there. But I thought there was one that you weren't.
Probably a special.
Eight thirty-one, okay, that's what it was, town has eight thirty-one, on the motion by Ms. Cook, it was. The third sentence on that line for eight thirty-one, which I think you guys were doing.
Yes.
Yeah, we amended it to have the, we're good.
The motion isn't amended, it's, the first reading of the motion was to. Approve the, the minutes of nine fourteen twenty-one, it's written. Motion of second, any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes four zero. Now we have Town Council of September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. Chair, I move we accept the Town Council minutes of nine twenty twenty-one, it's written.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero.
What, sorry, one, one thing, that was a special meeting, did we, did we clarify that in the motion? That was a special meeting, yeah.
I'll amend it to special meetings.
So that's, that was a previous action, correct?
Yes.
Just call a special town council.
Yeah, yeah.
As well as the twenty-first, be a special town council. Any objections, Abby, letting the vote stand with that amendment?
Hang with that.
You let the record show that the special town council meeting of September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, was motioned and seconded and passed four zero. Now we have the special town council meeting of nine twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. Chair, I move we accept the special town council meeting minutes from nine twenty-one twenty-one, it's written.
Second, any? Question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, signing the treasurer's warrant, we have a warrant in front of us tonight for two hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars, eighty-three cents.
Your motion sent a treasurer's warrant dated nine twenty-three, twenty-one, and the amount, you just read.
Thank you, got a second.
Any discussion on the warrant?
Thank you for putting it on the agenda. Very nice to be able to read it there.
Oh, good.
Much nicer.
That's, that's Barbara, so we'll think.
Now we can thank her, it's a lot easier to search for it.
What's the B and Y?
That is a launch payment for library construction.
For the roof, for the covered walkway?
No, 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 that's all paid for.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is for the actual buildings, the instructions, the old. No, that's really good.
Okay, we have a motion to sign the treasurer's warrant. Two hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars, eighty-three cents, in September twenty-third, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. Okay, public comment, are there any members of the public present, either present or on Zoom who'd like to speak on an item? That's not on the agenda, yes, sir?
I'm Chris Lynn, co-owner of, with Tom Howard on the Pumper Town Place property. With the last, I just.
That's the K, right?
Yes. They gather the modifications to the, to its own ordinance, everything, and that was approved at the last meeting. I did go to code enforcement this week, speak with Joe to try and get the permit written, he's on board with everything except for looking at the waiver written in the minutes. Spoke of having a waiver written by the Town Council. He wanted to have that writing, so my request or question, is that something that somebody can be appointed to write that on behalf of the Town Council, or how do I go about getting that?
Do you have, do you have the text of that with you tonight?
I don't have the final version, I have the edits whenever.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it right now.
Waiver maybe granted for all premises signed by the South Berwick Town Council. The last meeting was, waiver was approved, but there was never anything physical written or given. And Joe's requesting we have that.
I thought that the ordinance that we passed allowed the sign.
I thought it was an ordinance change.
Yeah.
And it's going to be effective thirty days from the date of, oh.
It does state in there that my special permission, I have to get the exact verbiage. And I can write something up this week if we want to have it ready for next meeting as well.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm obviously totally fine with that, it sort of seems like a weird process, because I thought we just reworked the ordinance.
Yeah, and everybody was on board, as was Joe, but he saw this and said, would you like to have something in the Town Council, right?
Yeah.
I don't know who to approach to have that written, and did this, needs to wait till the next meeting, or something, someone can be appointed to write it on behalf of the council, or?
No. Does this hurt your schedule at all, the timing, if we have?
I think that's the cleanest way to do it, that way there, one person isn't. Here we have, consensus, yeah.
Abby, sorry, what were you saying? All right, it's so hard to like, I know, I can't see and interact with you guys that well. Chris, I just wanted to make sure that this, this change, this little hiccup, is that okay with your schedule if we? If we bumped it to the next town council meeting with a special waiver that?
So, yeah, I, I guess if we have to bump it one more month, we can do that. I just wanted to make sure it was in process and I didn't know who to go to that, to get it.
So, I, I guess, so I'm confused on. I'm looking for the minutes because we voted that they could do the sign, so. I'm not sure why he needs a separate waiver when the council voted that they can.
I think, based on what I've heard tonight, we approved, we amended the ordinance, we amended the sign ordinance.
Yeah.
But as part of those amendments, it seems like there's a hook in there that requires subsequent action. That's what I'm.
George mentioned there's some language in there that, that said that the Town Council can't provide a waiver, but he wanted something writing outside of the minutes.
He wants the waiver.
Yes.
Yeah, so. At what meeting did we, did we amend the ordinance, the sign ordinance?
It was, it wasn't at the nine fourteen, so it's got to be, it's got to be the last August meeting. Or the very first September one.
I'll have a boss just call. What's another agenda for?
August tenth, action on zoning maintenance for one forty point two six.
Yeah.
Zoning signs.
But that, that is just cleaner to. You know, have that piece of paper in front of us, we'll go on and sign. As a waiver.
So who drafts that?
We're going to draft.
It's on the agenda for the next Town Council.
I think that's the best way to go. Speaking with the council, I, I don't know how else to do it.
Do you want to, I mean, I can draft something up as well. I'm willing to do that.
Yeah, yeah, just make sure we're, we're tight with.
With, with the verbiage of the.
And talk to code enforcement, see what. What he needs.
Yeah, I'll do a draft of that, I'll talk to Joe, send it to you guys.
So here's my question, Jack, we've already voted for it, right? And I'm just looking at, one, keeping our next agenda clean without stuff we don't need. Trying to speed it up a little bit for these gentlemen. Could we pass it to Jen, could we come in and sign it like we do the warrant and everything else off? I mean, it, all she's doing is writing a waiver, can we come in and sign it without?
Go ahead.
We don't need a meeting to sign the waiver. Correct? We don't have to sign the waiver at a meeting, so if Jen wrote the waiver and it was all set, could we come in over the course of early next week? Three counselors sign the waiver, it's good to go.
We've already approved the ordinance, so we've already approved this action to take place and amended it properly. If the code enforcement officer would like for his clarity, extra reinforcement of that policy, I think that's totally fine, I don't see that as something that we would need to do in a formal meeting. I agree with John. And I would hate to see this take any longer than it already has.
I also feel like, it sounds like the language, and I, I don't have it in front of me, it's like, may or can. It's not must.
I know, it's got to be shall in a legal document, if it's not shall.
Yeah.
You have the option of doing it, if it's shall, you have to do it.
I want, I obviously want to do this because we've held you up forever anyways and, and get this going, but I do feel like it's a valid point of like. So what, every time somebody wants to put up a sign going?
But I do feel like it's a valid point of like, so what, every time somebody wants to put up a sign going in the future, this stuff has, has to happen? You know, otherwise, why do we have an ordinance?
It seems like there's something better than the ordinance, just.
Right, which, which we can, which we can look at and fix, I just would rather if, if Jen has no issue writing this, talking to Joe, and, and she could get this done by the end of the week.
Absolutely.
I can drive in here and sign it, and Abby, we can, and Jack, we can all drive by, sign it, and then these guys can start working on their sign next week. I mean, it's.
Been a long time.
Getting close to Christmas, we're gonna get some signage up there so people can shop.
So the questions right now, I'm just looking it up in the code. E-code updated.
I'm not sure if it has been on the internet, I do have the hard copy in the book.
Could you go get that?
I can do that, Mr. Chair.
Because what I'd like to do, given Jones, which is, is that we simply just take the language as it's written, and then we know what we're authorized to manage and do.
I appreciate you.
I don't know what it says.
It says, the specific language is amended language, section F, for retail or commercial parks, which commercial parks have more than five businesses in one complex, located in the industrial zone one, a waiver may be granted for an off-premises sign by the South Borough Town Council. Prior to application and submission, ask them to secure approval from the occupant owner, which is CMP, FMT. Okay, so I, after just reading this section, it's, we don't have the whole entire thing, it does seem like it would make sense that we would need to provide a waiver, because we, we sort of amended the ordinance to allow this sort of like
Special.
Special, yeah.
At our discretion.
Yeah, exactly, so.
I think that's why the language may was put in there, so that the council has the right in the future.
We should choose, yeah.
That it's not shall.
Or, or yes, it's not gonna come down to the town, the code enforcement officer saying no.
Yeah.
That would come to us.
And, and instead of another way, that language powers the council to grant the waiver.
Yes.
Right.
Then it goes up and down from there. So, so we'll just wait for a second to
So you need the, because I, this is, this is the language right here, one forty dash two six, yeah.
Pursuant to, what is?
One forty dash twenty-six F.
Sign waiver. Right?
On premise, sorry.
Off premise, something. It's a nice little premises.
E R E F I S A S E S.
I S?
Yes.
Chris, you know, you're
What?
By number?
I would just say that's your phone.
Just two Pumpkin Town Place.
Okay, for number two. Place. E B A.
Pumpkin Town Place. So, so I had just, I guess, two Pumpkin Town Road.
Two Pumpkin Town Road.
In the building or facility areas, Pumpkin Town Place.
This is Pumpkin Town Place.
We actually just found it as you were going.
Cool, so, yeah.
Sorry, no, thank you. Thank you for grabbing too.
So that's, made by writing.
Yeah, all right, it's what we're signing.
No, I think that's the, that's the, that's the draft motion.
Okay.
Want to read it?
Oh, read it aloud?
Well, you're gonna move.
Okay.
Just read it.
A motion to sign, for the town council to sign the following waiver pursuant to one, sorry, pursuant to chapter one forty dash twenty-six F, the town council authorizes the town manager to draft an off-premises sign waiver for two Pumpkin Town Road, doing businesses Pumpkin Town Place, located in the industrial zone one, and free signatures are required.
Second. You get that, or do you want this?
I'll take that too.
I do, yeah, so we. Okay. Thank you. Okay, any discussion on the motion, Abby, you have anything?
I'm glad, I'm glad we were able to put that together quickly, thank you.
Oh, good, thank you.
All those in favor of the motion to draft a waiver for our signatures, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Abby says aye, so. Okay. There was a Okay, Chris, I think that's it.
All right, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris.
I think we have one more, I think we had a hand up for public comment.
Yeah. Pat?
Yep, yep, Pat Robinson, South Brattle Street. I'm just, I, I get the public notices for the planning board and the regular public events and, and such. I have not gotten a notice about town council agendas, town council meetings coming up. And I don't know why, I checked, I'm signed up, it says pending for text, it says subscribe for email. I have not received anything that I can remember. And I think more people would be coming to these meetings if they were getting notices that meetings were happening. People are busy, they don't pay attention to the calendar. So I, I would like somebody to investigate that and find out why notices aren't going out. Because the planning board, I'm getting two or three of them a week, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Pat.
I'll look into that.
Yeah. Any others? Okay. Going to town manager's report.
This week is Lieutenant Chris Burbank's last week with ten South Borough, I know it's sad. But we wish him the best in his future endeavors. We did actually make an offer today for someone for the library director position, so, and they accepted, so we're very glad about that. Karen's last day is November first, they'll work together that day and do a handoff. For the highway building update, the metal is being delivered tomorrow, our crew is gonna hang the walls. We have some hired laborers to do a crew of doing the install of the metal on the roof. And the concrete slab for the flooring will be done next Tuesday. At that point, there's time it needs to cure, so we need to keep heavy equipment up it for two weeks. But at the end of next week, the electrical will start there as well. Today, the dance studio parkamot was paved, and Sewell Street was paved yesterday. So this is the final job for the year, the paving is now complete for the season. And the Union Street speed table will be installed by the end of this week. And also, they're still continuing with their roadside mowing. I did actually speak to the main DOT today, finally, I get an update from them. So they are, they confirmed that they're still moving forward with the nine, Route ninety-one and Route two thirty-six intersection, scheduled to start in twenty-two and be completed by twenty-third.
On the calendar twenty-two?
Current.
Okay.
So, next spring into Esther Holland's gonna take them, but they confirmed the same dates as the last report that I had gotten from them a while back. And I also was able to, after a couple conversations, I have a meeting with them mid-October to start talking about doing the traffic study with the school. They were real responsive, the first phone call, but then he ended up calling me back this afternoon around four thirty, after I had told him, you know, the school bus had had an accident. And, you know, we widened the road, there's a lot of lanes there now, and, you know, we're just really expressing our, my concern. And so now I did at least have a meeting with them, they're gonna look into the study, and I should know more by the end of October on that, on that I did.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All good stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, unfinished business, before we go into unfinished businesses, three calendar items I'd like to mention. Schedule, we need to post a special town council meeting on October fifth and October sixth at four P M. And that'll be for executive session. Pursuant to when?
Three P M?
Four P M.
Just the council section as soon as I start at four.
Oh, turn.
Yeah. One, MRSA, section four oh five dot six eight. And that'll be for both, both of those meetings, so special meetings. And the other thing is a, a town council planning board workshop, also on ten five, and I believe that's set at six thirty P M.
Yeah, yes.
And that's to review local municipal authorities to regulate medical marijuana registered caregivers. The town attorney will be present for discussion and advice. So if you could get those gentleman.
I mean, the workshop, workshop is it?
Yes, the workshop is on, yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay, medical marijuana caregiver licensing. As far as this goes, the, the, the big item of that was to get to the workshop phase, so we can find a better handle on what our authority is and to regulate, so stay tuned for that, and to have more clarity as soon as that.
Has the planning board been invited to that?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
And you sent out a notice.
Okay. Do we know if it's still gonna join us here, or is he gonna directly?
We can decide to, sufficient.
Yeah, that's a, I'm trying.
Same question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd rather not have to drive back and forth. Will, oh, I know we will.
He said either way would be fine.
I'll get, get it. I'd drive too, if I was.
Right.
He doesn't need to, don't you have that? Okay, anything else on medical marijuana caregiver licensing, anyone in the audience? We'll move on to Free Baptist Church clock. Larry Crondon presented last, last time, and then followed that up with a letter. See the letter. Following that, we drafted a also attached, that was the minutes from July eighth nineteen ninety-one, they put the stipulations in there about the clock, it must be sold, it must be kept in working order. So what we're doing is basically undoing that requirement, so that the church can deal with its own business, because the town essentially gave up the clock back in nineteen ninety-one, but we're trying to free the church from somewhat onerous maintenance requirements.
Mr. Chair, I move that the town council relinquishes all ownership interests or conditions therefore for the clock at all its purchases?
Pertinences.
Pertinences, I'm having a struggle reading that, and fees to the church to act as necessary in its own behalf for further use the clock or disposal of the clock as the church sees it.
Okay.
And the findings leading up to that, that was the, the the, the, the change needed to make, Abby.
Yes, I see that now, I was just convinced it was in the minutes, but I see that in like the, the fourth bullet down there.
So we got that, that that was saying the age and history of the church building, comma, shouldn't be here, shouldn't be, yep, clock. But that's not part of the motion, so I just wanted to clarify that for the record, for the findings of this. That just passed through, I had a typo on the original draft.
And I just cut and paste.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, basically just need to see if there's any comments from the council of this.
I, I don't have a comment, but we do have a, it looks like a question from Jeff in the public, if this is the time.
Thank you, I just had a, a question as to the historical value that the clock brings to the town. I agree with the comments that you guys have been making as far as the, the upkeep and what the, the church had said as well, as far as I, I know there's gotta be a cost in, involved in it, just wasn't sure if the town council has referred back to the historic committee in regards to the value that it does bring. I believe that it's also kind of in conjunction with the comprehensive plan as well. And then, just even with their input, as far as if there might be some value with people in town that might be willing to maybe set up a group to, to support the clock. Just wanted to toss out there, I didn't know what other options there were to help out and still do. I'm just concerned if they sell the, the clock, the clock's no longer there, so just wanted to put my, my two cents and my concern in, thank you.
You. Based on the actual council nineteen ninety-one, the town gave up its, its ownership stake in the clock and put a condition on there about maintenance of the clock, and kinds of changed, and many years was twenty out of three. I don't know how many years that was, Larry, for one time. Yeah, so, the town really doesn't have an ownership interest in the clock since nineteen ninety-one. And so, if, if anyone has a, an interest in doing something with it, at this point in time, the negotiation shouldn't be with the town, but should be with the Free Baptist Church. So we're basically freeing the Free Baptist Church to carry on with their business and hopefully, in one way or the other, relieve itself of the burden of
Well stated.
For the discussion, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes four zero.
Congratulations, Larry, you're on a clock.
Thank you. Most likely, we're gonna fix it, at least this time around.
Yes.
You want a clock, you are now.
And going into way back machine here, I don't understand what that is, but there was, there was a discussion in the neighborhood about whether or not the bell would ring.
Yes.
With the clock, you know, striking, whatever, you know, customers a charge, whatever it did.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think it was the great, no, no, we're not gonna have the noise, we have the time, we're not telling it, so there was something and, and again, I'm going back thirty years on this in my recollection. So, anyway, good luck, Larry.
Yeah, thank you.
Good to see you again.
Oh, thanks, right now the clock does work, it's just the face is falling off on one, one side, so, that's a but it's gonna cost you a lot of money to fix it, so.
Right, right.
So I appreciate that.
Okay, you're welcome.
Yeah, thanks, yeah, I miss my time on the planning board, John.
We miss you.
Okay, you're up, Jennifer, on the personal policy for Maine Purse.
Yes, so Maine Purse came to us with this option to adopt and give us all the proper language. Basically,
Basically, Maine Purse in the past has only allowed to join the program when you first get, come on as an employee in the town. You have that first thirty day window to get in, lock in, you can't get out, you can't change it, you're in. This provision that they're changing is they want to have a one time. Allowance where if anyone's been over, been in with the town for over five years, they will allow them to opt in now. Then moving forward, for the first five years of someone's employment, they will have an open enrollment every year for the first five years. So instead of only having that one thirty day window, they will have that thirty day window to be a tax exempt deduction. And then four more years to do it as after tax deduction, still be in the program. So this would be something that we adopt, we keep going forward, H R would have, when the open enrollment happens every year, we would add this into the few people that would. Fall into the specifications if they could still add it to the program. So right now, that would today, if we decide to do that, it would have ten people that have the option to opt in. It's not gonna cost the town really much of a difference because we only match with Maine Purse or four oh one, four fifty seven. So we don't do both. So it wouldn't change much when it comes to that, and we don't know who exactly will take it, but I think it's a great opportunity to allow staff. When they have missed that window of time in a, in a new job to opt in.
Yeah. Agreed.
We would just have to accept the verbiage as.
So I'm looking at the, it says stuff should be taken by employer.
So that would be us.
Okay, the governing body must take action to adopt the provisions and provide Maine Purse with certified action. Or test to a copy of the meeting, but it's.
Yes. That'd be the first.
And then it gets into Maine Purse. Okay, so it's effective day. That's just when the employees can take it, so what action do we take?
So this first, this first piece right here, we need to adopt, it takes about the rules, it gives me authority to decide.
So we have to adopt it and authorize it at the same time, so.
Okay, so number two is what the, pretty much what the motion would say. I would.
I think we made a motion to adopt.
I would agree, the, the one and the two.
Okay, motion to adopt the provisions of five M R S section one eight two five two dash C as enacted by P L twenty twenty one. Chapter two eighty six, as long as I'm making first roles. Chapter eight oh three for non participating employees with actual membership previously declined if these data mean first and do comply with the requirements as Jen just summarized.
Second. Any discussion?
I'm happy that they are allowing some flexibility to allow more employees to take advantage of this, that's.
Me too, absolutely, especially young folk who come on and didn't take that window of opportunity.
Your discussion? All those in favor of adopting provisions as stated, say aye.
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 Aye. Yes, so that motion passes four zero.
Mister Chair, I will, we authorize Chanel and town manager to sign the amendment agreement between the employer and the main public employees retirement system.
Okay.
In discussion, I'm motion. Hearing another Davis, say aye.
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 Aye, sorry.
She was pointing to her eye, Jack, I'm sorry.
Okay, that motion passes four zero. Okay, that's all our business on that, right Jennifer?
That's correct, thank you.
Okay. Possible actions, this is a new business item number three, possible action of solar energy facilities moratorium.
Chair, I move we adopt the solar energy facilities moratorium based on pressure, based on the public hearings and input.
Second.
With the corrections.
With the corrections, thank you.
Okay, any discussion on that?
This is a smart move strategically thinking ahead, I'm glad we're taking.
Okay, I couldn't hear you.
This is a smart move strategically thinking ahead, I'm glad we're taking this step.
Talking to other people in other jurisdictions and it's quite a wave of this in, in the entire state and region, so.
Yeah, it's seeming to take off right across the state of slowing it down a little bit.
Yeah, do what's right for us.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the solar energy facilities moratorium, say aye.
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 Yes, that motion passes four zero, that includes an emergency. A preamble so that the effective date of this moratorium is today. Okay, renewal of liquor license, special amusement permit for the stage house in. Any reason, and so let's move on to.
I'll move on your, I missed chair, I moved the wheel, approve the liquor license for the stage house in, they are business in good standing with no issues heard or written.
Okay.
In discussion.
Does that have to also signify the approval of the special amusement permit?
And the special amusement, thank you.
So the motion is the renewal of liquor license, special amusement permit for stage house in?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Having trouble reading complete sentence tonight.
Alright.
Okay, thank you Abby. If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. So that motion passes four zero. Council member climate, Savvy, do you have anything?
It, you know, I'm hearing it online, but I get to see it with my own eyes too, driving by, that basketball court is getting some great action. It's really nice to drive by and see so many people, young people on there getting some exercise in and nice to see, but that was all I had for tonight.
John?
I'd like to continue to thank Jen for the great work she's doing, filling in and doing our financial side of the house. I'm sure it's a lot right now and just wanted to let you know you are doing a fantastic job. And thanks Tyann for filling in again, you're doing well fitting in over there sitting for Barbara, thank you.
Thank you.
Hillary?
I just wanna put a plug out there for people who are interested in public service, we have a lot, several openings. On the planning board, on other committees in town and. You know, especially a lot of the folks that, that join our meetings on a regular basis. You know, that time could easily be used. Serving on a board if you, if you are interested, so that's my plug.
Thank you. Someone asked me this, I filled in, I believe, I, I spoke correctly, but. Tyann, do you have the names of the town council candidates for November for the one year term and the three year term? Do you have that on the top of your head?
I do.
Just say who that is, please.
So far, on the ballot right now for our one year term, we have Jeff Minahan and Alita Galvin. For the three year term, we have Abby rerunning, we have Jessica Seer, and we have Matthew Ravna. Let's off school board too.
I'm sure.
For the school board, we have.
I'll know that for sure.
We have the rerun for Lisa Flynn, we have. Her name is Jenna Leonard. That are candidates for school board.
And there's.
Is there a third?
No, no, I was gonna say there's a forum. Can you get a forum a week from Thursday on October seventh?
Yeah, for candidates.
Oh, yes, candidates, yeah, and those are all listed on the website.
Great, I might nickel back. Just for a second.
Oh, sure.
Thank you for where we took the pump ups off our website, I love it. I complain about it, they fixed it.
Hey, it's a. It's one of those happy sad things, congratulations to Chris Burbank, Lieutenant Burbank for as many years of service, I think nineteen ninety two maybe?
Twenty nine years, yeah.
Yeah, so I think nineteen ninety two, he's been on board and done a terrific job, it's been great working with him. Particularly the fairly close work we did on the police station. Both him and the chief really stepped up to, to make that project come together from kind of the inside out and dovetailing with the. The contractor, the construction manager, the architect. So I'd like to congratulate him on his last week, regret to see him go. He's done a fantastic job as a representative of the town and wearing a uniform. And so I look forward to hopefully seeing some, something happen with the library, that'd be great, that, that'll be a, a big milestone.
Yeah, absolutely.
Fill that, fill that need. So that's pretty much all I can.
Chair, who are we adjourned? Bring us all the papers.
All those in favor of journey, say aye.
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 Aye, everybody.
A couple, a couple of items.
Yes, Jack, there's a folder in front of you, all the blue ones are just you, those are payroll, we're getting caught up on.
I will later. Bye, everybody. Bye, everybody.